Subscribe to WROK on YouTube and never miss a meeting.
All right, welcome everyone. I'm going to call to order the Monday, March 21st, Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Perusch followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please hand if you can.
As we gather here this evening on the first full evening of the spring and as we all recover, some happy, some not so much, after a full weekend of sports activity, we are reminded by watching the international news that we should be grateful that we live in a country where freedoms are spelled out so eloquently in the Bill of Rights and they're not only tolerated but celebrated. The terrifying scenes from Eastern Europe of families traveling miles to escape the invasion and of children cowering against the sound of bombs and missiles reminds us that despite our political differences, we're blessed to live in a country that protects those values of liberty and democracy and that tolerates dissent without violence. We hold all of the people in Ukraine in our heart so that one day soon they will be able to once again enjoy the same freedoms that we often take for granted and that they will soon live once again in peace and prosperity. We're grateful for the sacrifices that our men and women in service, in aid agencies, and the journalists who are assisting in the war effort in Europe and pray that they all stay safe. Against the backdrop of this awful conflict and as we move forward to tackle the issues facing our own community, not only this evening but throughout the new season, may we have wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and perspectives of the citizens of our community. May we have the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. And may we always strive to do what is best for the Royal Oak community and its citizens as a whole in an effort to keep Royal Oak a safe, inviting, and peaceful community in which to work and live. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Up next, we have a proclamation designating April as National Autism Acceptance Month in Royal Oak. And I know we have Suse Ohani here from the Judson Center, the Chief Operating Officer. Good to see you again, Sue.
Good to see you as well, Mayor.
It's going to be my pleasure to read this proclamation and... All right. Can you guys hear me? Nothing at all now. This is not the mic drop I was hoping to have. So we're going to use my dad voice. Which is definitely nice. So Sue, this is a proclamation designating April 2022 as Autism Acceptance Month in Royal Oak. Whereas autism is a pervasive developmental disorder affecting the social communication behavioral skill of those affected by it. Whereas, as more health professionals become proficient in diagnosing autism, more children are being diagnosed on the autism spectrum, resulting in rates as high as 1 in 44 children nationally, with Michigan having the fifth largest autism population as compared to other states. Whereas while there is no cure for autism, it is well documented that if individuals with autism receive treatment early in their lives, that often it's possible for those individuals to lead significantly improved lives. Whereas individuals with autism often require lifetime of specialized and community support services to ensure their health and safety and to support families' resilience as they manage the psychological and financial burdens autism presents. Whereas to raise awareness and encourage acceptance, Judson Center is spearheading its Bring Autism to Light campaign, now in its sixth year, to educate parents, professionals, and the general public about autism by light head campuses with blue lights throughout the month of April, in addition to inviting participation from the community in this multifaceted effort. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Mayor Fournier, and members of the Royal Oak City Commission, in partnership with the Judson Center, proclaim April 2022 as National Autism Acceptance Month in the city of Royal Oak, and urge all employees, presidents, and members of the business community to bring autism to light, raise awareness, and encourage acceptance during National Autism Acceptance Month. Sue, it's my honor and privilege to present this to you for your efforts and efforts to build this in the city.
Thank you.
May it work for you.
Hi, I'm great. So I just really want to say thank you so much on behalf of our Board of Trustees, our staff, all the children and families that we serve. This is such an important month and we really appreciate the proclamation, but more than that, your support. For six years, you've been a part of supporting us in our Bring Autism to Light and Autism Acceptance Month, and we just truly appreciate that. The children appreciate that. You know, our autism services has been serving the Royal Oak community for the past 17 years. And us as an agency has been right at the corner of 13 and Greenfield since 1924. So we're really invested in this community and we appreciate your support. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Sue. All right, that brings us to item five, which is approval of the agenda. Commissioner Macy?
I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Macy, second by Commissioner Perusch.
Yes.
Okay, discussion on the agenda. All right. Mr. Douglas?
Mayor, the item number nine, road mileage update and renewal request, does not seem to have been ever been added on the website or publicly posted. Or am I missing something? Mr. Bray?
It was as of early this afternoon. That's what our Agenda Master has conveyed to me, but I've been tied up in meetings, so I've been looking at the city engineer and she's nodding her head, yes. So this is an earlier edition of the agenda. So anyone looking at that would be able to find that.
Anyone looking at as of 4:00 this afternoon?
No, no, it was like about 1:00.
1:00?
1:00, yeah.
Okay, we're required to post agendas by Friday at sometime noon.
It goes on the agenda.
Okay, but no one has had a chance to see the contents of it unless they looked at it today rather than looking at it Friday with the rest of the agenda items.
Point well taken. There was a technical clarification, that's what held that up. I was not aware of it, that it wasn't up on Friday until Monday morning as well. My belief, this is not a time-sensitive issue, so if you want to discuss it for the purposes and just postpone that until the April 11th meeting, we'll be fine.
So you suggest discussing it tonight or?
I would. I would discuss it this evening because again, it's the agenda that qualifies as what we post. It's not the content. So obviously, it should have been up over the weekend that anyone at their leisure that they could look at it. But I would say, you know, staff is here, we're prepared to discuss this. And so if you don't feel comfortable taking action on it, at least go through it. It's a lot of materials, a lot of information. So discuss that then. If you feel better about this, simply to table or postpone the issue until the following meeting. And it would still be timely for the purposes that we have to communicate that to the Attorney General's Office and allow adequate time. This is a November ballot issue, so it's, you know, technically, I believe we hit until the end of July. But we just wanted to put this out in front of you at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, a call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, this brings us to item six, which is public comment. The city values and relies on the public to help us make our decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the city commission, both on city-related issues that are on the agenda or not on the agenda. As there are no public hearings scheduled, this will be the only opportunity you have to speak at public comment. I ask when you're up here that public comment be directed to the commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight, simply raise your hand and wait till you're recognized by me, the mayor. Come to the podium. For the record, we do ask you to state your name and address. Please be mindful that we want to hear from anyone who wishes to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes. And there's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. Please note that typically, we don't respond directly to public comment questions. However, we are taking notes. So if you're talking about something that's on the agenda, we will ask those questions to staff when the time is right. And I can look over here and I can see our city manager also is taking notes on other items to follow up on, and he takes care of those issues as needed. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem. Email is a very effective way to get ahold of any of your commissioners ahead of the meeting, so we can engage in thoughtful dialogue prior to, you know, agenda topics. So with that, who's first? Dr. Herzog.
Amanda Herzog, 306 Rhode Island Avenue. I'm Chair of the Environmental Advisory Board. So as many of you know, the draft Royal Oak Sustainability and Climate Action Plan is available for public review and feedback. You can find this on the city webpage under Sustainability, or you can come to the Environmental Advisory Board meeting this Wednesday at 7:00 and give feedback during public comment. We will bring the final version to all of you in May for your approval. But in the meantime, I would like to touch on something that's actually on the agenda tonight, and that is the Earth Day event and the permit that goes along with that. So the Earth Day event is going to be co-hosted with the Environmental Advisory Board and the Sierra Club Turn Oakland County Green. It's an all-day event from 9:00 to 1:00. It's going to be on Troy Street and around Centennial Commons. It includes a fair. So the Environmental Advisory Board has been putting on an Earth Day Fair since 2017, but this year it's going to be three times bigger. So, so much fun. There's a climate march that's going to be throughout the city, and then there's going to be, it's going to end with a rally with speeches from local leaders, advocates, and educators. And there will be artists and musicians, there's going to be a recycling truck and a smart bus. It's a real opportunity to celebrate Royal Oak's leadership throughout the county in climate action and sustainability. We're able to engage the other 61 communities in the county. We're going to promote environmental stewardship, but most importantly, it's a call to action. This is the time to start addressing climate issues throughout the county. This is a family and multi-generational event. You're going to have fun, you're going to learn something, and we hope that all of you will be able to come, and the Royal Oak community to be able to come. And I just want to thank you for your consideration on our permit.
And Dr. Herzog, I know you have read me an email. I did read it. I just haven't checked my calendar to respond, so I just want to let you know.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Mr. Maney?
Hi, I'm John Maton, 2902 Elmhurst. I'm also President of the Michigan World War II Legacy Memorial, and that's why I'm here to speak on behalf tonight. First of all, I'd like to invite all of you. I think you've all gotten invitations and we've got responses back from many already of our groundbreaking on April 7th at 2:00, so that's Thursday. I invite everybody in the commission, everybody listening, everybody in the state that would like to come to this. It's been a long time in coming. A couple of World War II vets we've talked to, it means so much to them when we talked about them and actually Commissioner Perusch's invocation brings up a lot of thinking of what's going on in Europe today and how important and how relevant it is now that we remember what happened and make sure that we teach about that. And so going forward, that everybody knows what happened, what people have done for us, and also so we learn so we don't repeat those things in the future. So I'd like to thank Aaron and John for helping us work our way through the paperwork necessary to really get started on all of this. So hopefully shortly after the groundbreaking, we'll be able to actually start moving things around and get the first phase of the memorial built. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, John. And for those of you, I mean, come out April 7th, things are hard to do and the amount of work that you and Deb and everybody on your team have put in over the last number of years to get this thing, I mean, it's just an incredible story in itself, how the legacy got to be here at Memorial Park. And I know it's a huge achievement. And obstacle after obstacle fundraising, I mean, just an amazing thing that you guys have done. And we can't wait to break ground and start to get this thing built because, you know, our World War II veterans deserve it for sure. Thank you. Who's next? Yes, sir, here. In the burgundy or purple? Figure I know my color is after kindergarten, but the lights here are all a little bit...
You know, I'm not even sure what it is. So, hello commissioners. It's a great pleasure to be able to address you this evening. I'm actually going to expand a little bit on what Dr. Herzog was mentioning. My name is Andrew Saropoulos, and I live at 316 South Maple Avenue in Royal Oak. And I'm speaking to you as one of a team of organizers known as Turn Oakland County Green. Furthermore, I'm an appointed member of the Royal Oak Environmental Advisory Board. And this year, the Royal Oak Environmental Advisory Board and Turn Oakland County Green are combining our efforts to make Royal Oak the center of Earth Day festivities in Oakland County and across the region. And this is especially critical because for the past couple of years, the environmental community has had no place to gather, learn, advocate for, or appreciate our environment. In the past, environmentalists had the Michigan Earth Day Fest in the Rochester Hills area. However, for the past two to three years, COVID and the departure of event organizers has left no comparable replacement. And that is the reason I am excited to work with the advisory board and the environmental community at large to make Royal Oak, hopefully, a location for Earth Day festivities in 2022. The Royal Oak Environmental Advisory Board has hosted, as Dr. Herzog mentioned, an annual earth fair in the farmer's market for a number of years. And in 2022, we hope to expand this event and turn it into a destination for those across the region to come celebrate, learn, and advocate for our planet. Royal Oak in many ways is the perfect location. It is about to hopefully publish its Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, which will likely demonstrate some of the strongest commitments to climate change in our county. Scientists tell us that we have just eight years to cut our missions drastically according to the 2018 IPCC report. And Royal Oak is in the process of setting commitments in line with this target date, demonstrating it understands the severity of our environmental situation and is committed to exploring local policies to solve this problem. No municipality has all the answers, and many questions still exist about our planet's future. But this is an important and promising development that many peer cities have not taken. As a current model for local leadership, we hope this event will bring attention to our city's top-tier sustainability program, and we hope it will use it to showcase to other civic leaders and grassroots organizations. That local change is possible while providing a fun, safe, and interesting event for families, with speakers ranging from world-renowned climate scientists like Dr. Julia Cole and Dr. Jonathan Overpeck to County Executive Dave Coulter. I wanted to thank the city of Royal Oak and for its consideration of our permit application this evening. Although it is listed as part of the consent agenda, I will be on hand if there's any questions that should arise, along with my colleagues. So once again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is it Mr. McGee? All right. Can't remember to take out the trash on Tuesday nights, but...
Good evening. My name is Patrick McGee, 4524 Elmhurst Avenue. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item F. I'm going to ask that you guys remove that from the consent agenda and have a discussion around it. One of the things I'm, two things I'm passionate about in Royal Oak, the sidewalks in front of my house and Normandy Oaks Park. I spent a lot of time in Normandy Oaks Park, just came from Normandy Oaks Park. Love the new ramps. It was great to get the stroller from my house to the path. Thank you, Commissioner Cole. And, but I'm here to speak on Agenda Item F. I took the time to read through the packet that was presented. It was really long and a lot of confusion and a lot of extra information that didn't need to be in it. But what I, the takeaway I had from that was, it was $420,000 over four years to mow and put down the roundup with the clause to potentially do a controlled burn if we wanted to add that as a extra item to the contract. I really think this whole contract is not needed. We can use that $420,000 to hire a seasonal staffer to do the work at Normandy Oaks. And this contract doesn't even cover all Normandy Oaks. It's just three specific parts. The, if I remember right, the soccer fields are still being maintained by the city staff, as well as the path, and the splash pad, and the playgrounds. And none of it's going to Elks Park, which is what I'm passionate about because that's where my son and new daughter love to play. So what I'm going to ask for you guys is pull it from the consent agenda, have a discussion about it, and see if there's a better use of that $420,000 over the course of four years that we could maybe get the fence removed, get some fence posts pulled up. That would be huge. Thanks. Bye.
Is there Ms. Farhat back there?
Yes. Hi there, my name is Julie Farhat and I live at 2209 Vincetta Boulevard. My husband and I are both lifelong Royal Oak residents who are dedicated to the betterment of our community. John is a successful Royal Oak real estate agent. We operate a small construction company together, and I'm actively involved in a number of local philanthropic efforts. We are proud to be part of our city's growth and are committed to making Royal Oak a great place to live, work, and play. We are both products of Royal Oak Public Schools, and our four young daughters are following in our footsteps. I was recognized as 2019 Citizen of the Year for my dedication to my community through the Mind Over Matter organization. I lost my mother to suicide in 2005 and have since raised $500,000 for local brain research, suicide prevention programming, and crisis intervention services. I'm usually here talking about the mom race this time of year, but today I'd like to discuss a very different matter affecting Royal Oak residents. I am calling for the repeal of zoning ordinance 770-22, Section 11, that states, "An accessory building does not include a combination of services which makes it easily convertible to habitable space. The combination of services may include water, sewer, gas, electric, telephone, and/or cable as determined by the zoning administrator." This ordinance is a regulatory overreach that hinges on the unfair assumption that Royal Oak citizens are going to break the law. It assumes that anyone who's interested in adding utilities to their garage must also be interested in going behind the city's back to create an Airbnb-type property that could be used to house transient friends, family members, and other undesirables. Regulations like this do nothing to build public trust or move our city forward. Not only does this ordinance contain discriminatory undertones, it is redundant and results in several double standards. The city of Royal Oak already has zoning ordinance in place to help maintain the integrity, usage, and population density of single-family neighborhoods. 770-22 subsection E2 clearly states, "There shall only be one single-family dwelling permitted per lot," period. This expressly prohibits someone from establishing a secondary dwelling in a single-family neighborhood. A dwelling is defined under 778 as containing no less than a kitchen, bathroom, and bedroom/living space. The zoning ordinance does not define the individual components of a dwelling, but according to 770-7 subsection F, "Any word or term not defined herein shall be used with a meaning of common or standard utilization." So Merriam-Webster defines a kitchen as a place such as a room with cooking facilities. Merriam-Webster also defines a bathroom as a room containing a bathtub or a shower, and usually a toilet or a sink. This terminology is widely accepted by the housing industry, and most rental properties contain these three key components that make a space habitable by today's standards. Under 770-22, there are 11 additional zoning ordinances that limit the quantity, size, shape, placement, and lot coverage of accessory structures in residential districts. These spatial regulations, combined with the city's definitions of accessory building, accessory use, and private garage, prevent a homeowner from using a detached garage for much of anything beyond the storage of motor vehicles. Having defensible commonsense laws is how public trust is built. Having convoluted regulations like 770-22 erode public trust and cause more harm than they're worth. Can you imagine if we had laws prohibiting residents from owning Corvettes because they could be used to exceed the speed limit? That would be ridiculous. Many law-abiding Royal Oak citizens own sports cars. We have an entire special event built around cars and the need for speed. To protect public safety, we have posted speed limits, radar guns, and police officers that are willing to enforce the laws. Why can't code enforcement take a similar approach to defending our zoning ordinance? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farhat. Is that Mr. Sackett?
Yep. How's your arm? Ready to go?
It's ready.
Okay. My name's Mark Sackett. My summer address is 31050 Woodward Avenue, Memorial Park, of course. I'm the General Manager of the Royal Oak Leprechauns, and I just want to give you a quick update. 30 home games this year. Our first three games, we're going to have at 11:00 a.m., and they're going to bring in all the schools. We're going to bring in our school, my entire school, from Troy is coming to the ballgame. So we're excited about that. Over the last, whatever, six, eight months or so, we've installed a new batter's eye, which is a 20-foot-high fence in center field. We put a new pressbox window in. This is what the Leprechauns did. And then another thing we're doing is we're going to be putting a deck out in left field. Our mascot is Patty O'Dinger, and we're going to make a Patty-O-deck. Patty-O-deck, get it? Ha-ha. Okay, so that'll be out in left field. That'll be fun. We're attacking this project head-on this year. We've made some arrangements with some restaurants to stream the game live on YouTube Live. This will be, it'll be, we'll have one camera last year. We're going to have two, at least three cameras this year. One of the most important things for this will be having Wi-Fi. It's something we didn't have it last year, but we made it work. I know that they are working on the Wi-Fi now. Hopefully, we'll get a good, strong Wi-Fi signal out at that park for this summer. I'm told it's going to be there, and I'm thanking you for making sure that happens. We've had, really had the community step up this year. Belfour is property restoration. They provided us $25,000 to build that fence. And that's exactly what it cost between the tarp we're putting on there. Henry Ford Health Systems, they have committed to us $45,000 over five years, so for them. And then the other, Jim Schaefer and Associates, Realtor, committed $31,000 over five years. So these are people that are really stepping up in the community and helping us. We're trying to stay involved with the community at least once a month, as you may have noticed, with our winter fest and lighting the field, and we've done some things with the sledding contest. In the next, probably about next month or so, I'm going to be meeting with the GLEAC Baseball Conference. This is a Division II that's located throughout our state, Indiana and Wisconsin. It includes Wayne State, Davenport University in Grand Rapids, Northwood, Saginaw Valley, University of Wisconsin Parkside, and Purdue Northwest. We are looking at bringing their division tournament, which happens in May, right here to Royal Oak. And it'd be a huge thing. We had a perfect, the field, everything's set for them. We just need to improve the, probably the media deck for them a little bit better, but otherwise, we're excited about bringing that possibility to Royal Oak. And that's really all I've got, 74 days till opening day. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sackett. It's only a little bit of time for me to get my arm in order. Who's next? John? I'm sorry, Mr. Farhat.
Hello, John Farhat, 2209 Vincetta. I'm just quickly going to finish up what my wife started. It's rare that she can't get all of her words in on time, but I'll try to make this brief. According to 770-21, our city's zoning regulations, quote, "Shall be the minimum regulations for promoting and protecting public health, safety, and general welfare, and shall be uniform for each class of land, buildings, structures, or uses throughout each district." This suggests that we should not have more regulations than needed to enforce our zoning ordinances. It also implies that within the same one-family residential neighborhood, attached garage owners should not be permitted to create more useful space than detached garage owners. Similarly, Airbnb operators should not be subject to less scrutiny than private citizens using their single-family homes for their original intended purpose. And in no case should a ZVA be applying a different set of decision-making standards to a different ordinance or different citizens. If the purpose of 770-22 was to prevent Royal Oak residents from being uncomfortable in their homes, then keep this ordinance. This regulation will continue to send a strong message to the Henry Ford and Beaumont doctors, the GM execs, and other professionals considering relocating to Royal Oak, that our city is a great place to work, play, and start a family. But if you really want to live your best life, or build your dream home, you better move somewhere like Bloomfield Hills or buy a cottage up north if you want to live a luxurious lifestyle. Whatever you do, don't invest too much money in your own home, or do anything that might make one of your neighbors jealous. That's simply not allowed here. However, if the prohibition of combination of services in a detached garage was intended to be an extra insurance policy to 770-21 to discourage people from creating secondary dwellings in a single-family neighborhood, I urge you to examine the court regulation and ask yourselves whether it's defensible enough even on its own. If not, how can we improve compliance with this ordinance through education and enforcement action? Can we find a way to punish those who violate our laws without also punishing well-intended citizens who are simply trying to live their best lives here in Royal Oak? I hope we can work together to fulfill our city's mission to make Royal Oak an inviting, premier, and diverse community for all. Thank you.
Luigi?
Good evening. Luigi Cutraro.
Luigi Cutraro, 415 South Washington. The reason I'm here today is about, you guys got a number 11. The meeting tonight is about the outdoor dining, which I, this is something new to me. No one of the DDA ever contacted me. As a matter of fact, no one of the DDA ever contacted anyone. So I don't even know it was on their agenda tonight. But, oh, by the way, I wanna congratulate, to appoint Chief Moore. Great decision. As you know, I was one of the very first businesses to ever attend in Royal Oak. As a matter of fact, I was one of the very few businesses to ever attend in Oakland County. I thank all you guys to, when you guys approved it, because without the 10, a lot of business wouldn't be in business today. So I thank you for that. Today, you know, I took my 10 down about two weeks ago because it really was not looking too good. So I just purchased another 10, a little more attractive. And now I just find out that my gotta be some change it, okay? Which, I understand that, you know, whatever change, even if no one ever contacted us about, you know, the recommendation for an outdoor dining. I mean, we only got about six or seven businesses in Royal Oak who got outdoor dining. And I find that a little disappointment that on the DDA part, that no one even contacted us to let, or listen, to put, you know, to give, maybe we can come up with some ideas, you know, about, with the 10. The outdoor dining is very, very important. What's going on in Royal Oak is we do have the nine o'clock to two o'clock business, okay? But the four o'clock to nine o'clock is getting thinner and thinner and thinner, without going to details. We do have, we do have to have the four o'clock to nine o'clock business, okay? And those businesses are restaurants. And the 10 in the summertime, you know, I think it puts them, I mean, the whole environment looks better when people are dining outside. So, and I heard a lot of rumors, you know, I mean, I know the Restaurant Association sent, as a matter of fact, Bob Morton's supposed to be over here, but he's out of the country, so. And I'm, you know, you hear a lot of rumors, okay? So whatever decision we, you guys made, I'm out of time. It's okay. But, you know, I hope the decision will be transparent, okay? And otherwise, you know, like the Three Musketeers, one for all, all for one, okay? You can't just do, you know. So whatever you guys do, you know, I mean, if the, you have to be for all of it. So I appreciate, good night.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. We appreciate it. Okay, anybody else? Mr. Thompson, you coming up?
Yes.
All right.
Mike Thompson, 1210 Irving, Lawson Park Homeowners Association. We've got three of us here tonight. We're here to talk about the Harrison dispensary. So, great experiences living in Royal Oak with the leadership, with all the departments. It's recreational marijuana, the dispensary locations. It's quite a challenge and you've got to work through it. So I'm here to talk about it tonight. The first thing is, we really need a public hearing. We need a public hearing at the city commission level. The reason is, it's Mickey Mouse what's going on now. It's, we find out, like on a Friday, Thursday or Friday, if it's on the agenda on Monday. We've got an association. That means we've got to organize and communicate with our membership by Monday. We really want the 15 days that a public hearing would give us. The other thing is, the planning commission isn't the governing body. It's a recommendation. So a public hearing should be by the governing body, which is the city commission on these dispensaries. You also created the marijuana amendment, so you know it more than anyone. So that's another reason to engage for that public hearing. Also, Commissioner Colo, we'd like you, as our closest commissioner, to please motion to schedule a public hearing once the Harrison dispensary is ready to go to the city commission. The next item is graphics. Bob Wolfson and I, when we were up in front of the planning commission, we joked that we felt like a bunch of farmers because we had Jim Razer and his team of specialists projecting, you know, graphs and pictures. And we came up with boards and masking tape and crayons. There's ways to balance or to equalize. It's, Novi has a projector that you come up to the podium and it projects what you're looking at right on the board. Or even city manager, Mr. Brake, if you would allow us to send some key PDFs that you could review ahead of time and say, "Could we please show the current zoning map or land uses that we're looking at?" Just to, I think it's an unfair advantage, especially since we're residents as well. Finally, we want, we want a community impact study of the Harrison dispensary and what's around there. It's a complicated site and we really should take our time and go forward with the best information, due diligence. This really isn't happening. We've got a 20-year-old master plan that's out of date. The planning department, which does excellent reviews of projects, put out a, an attachment of, just, I'm almost done, of an obsolete. It doesn't even show the current land uses that are around there. So it's not even up to date. My neighbor Dave Robbins, if he could speak next with the association, wants to describe what we believe is a proper community impact study for such an important business. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Good evening, I'm Dave Robbins. I'm with the Lawson Park Homeowners Association. As Mike said, I'd like to speak about the community impact study. But before that, I'd like to ask that the dispensary at 424 Harrison not be considered approval until we work together to do a great study. That would be in spirit with what the Michigan Association of Planning says. And I'm gonna quote a very, very nice quote from their site, "That developments should involve a broad-based citizenry, including public and private sector leaders, community interest groups, and multidisciplinary professionals. A positive relationship between development and the making of community should be established through a citizen-based participatory, planning and design process." I think we've got a really great opportunity here to make sure that we're not gonna impact the area negatively. There are eight components to a community impact study. I'll just go through those briefly and relate those to how they relate to the, or relate, how those relate to the project. Current state is the first component. We need to identify the current uses around the property. Unfortunately, the planning department reports zoning map of 126 to 2022 is not accurate and is out of date. That needs to be updated. Second component is a neighborhood enhancement plan. This identifies the community vision and the planning objectives. The parcel's current zoning is not consistent with the master plan's future land use designations or anything around it. And I guess that there was, there was an unsuccessful rezoning attempt and there's a proposed zoning attempt to change this from general industrial to mixed use. I believe the mixed use, number one, proposal was in May of 2020. We need to revisit that. Third component is an economic factor. This will impact the values of the homes. Now, the proponents of the plan say that we can expect 4% appreciation of value of homes. Well, I'll tell you, 2021, the national average was 19.1% appreciation. So if I were to weigh what I would like, I would like to ensure that retail, highly-traffic retail, does not go into the area to therefore depress those values of that home. And 4% is a rather meager offering, I think. We also need to see the owner's business plan. That's component number four. Owners should submit expected number of customers per day and the demographic data. In their presentation, they had a rough idea of 200 people. Area dispensaries have up to 650 daily customers per day. The road on Harrison is 25 feet wide. You have one and a half car widths if you account for parking on there. So you put 200, 300 cars on that at four o'clock, you're gonna have a lot of problems. And we need to study what that impact's gonna be and what can we do to mitigate that. Component, I'm out of time. Well, thank you very much for your consideration. We'll submit this to you, but there's many good reasons why we should work together on this project. Thanks again.
Good evening, Commissioner. Thanks so much. My name is Susan Gilbert. I'm part of the Lawson Neighborhood Association as well. I live at 1219 Irving and I'm here to support my fellow neighbors as well. Just talking about the different stressors that we experience in the neighborhood. All four corners of the city have their own unique stressors. We don't think ours are any more unique, but specifically I-75 and 696. The train and the DTE substation all create some very unique stressors for our neighborhood. And adding to that, the additional trips that this dispensary will create. I did my own research. I spoke earlier to the planning commission about these things. 300 to 600 unique trips a day. I did these studies on dispensaries across the country. I looked at cities that were similar to ours. Kirkland, Washington, a nearby suburb, Washington State, came to mind when one of their city commissioners shared that the dispensary in their town really had traffic similar to fast food. If any of you are not familiar with the Harrison Road and the bypass from Bermuda, please take a drive through there, check it out. This is a residential street. And a traffic study is not going to provide due diligence. It's not about a traffic study. It's about 300 to 600 new, unique trips on top of the excessive amount of non-residential traffic that we have because we are impacted by Waze, we are impacted by Google Maps. All of the crowdsourcing traffic apps will indeed route anybody searching for this dispensary through that Bermuda bypass. I know that it is marked as a know-through traffic zone, but any of our neighbors in this neighborhood will share with you that nobody pays attention to the know-through traffic signs. I understand. It's a fact of life. The highway was there when we moved there. We knew that. But we anticipated that we would get the respect when the signs went up, when all of the things went up to prevent that non-residential traffic. It's really not doing enough. We just spent a million dollars on parks in our neighborhood and putting a dispensary in seems incongruent with the plan. Thank you.
All right, anybody else wish to speak at public comment tonight? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Hi, guys. I just want to reiterate that the open meeting would be fantastic for these people. And just remind you that you are representing people, not just empty houses or buildings. I saw on the news, another news flash. It was like a lethal weapon. You guys might be too young for that, but it was Danny Glover and Mel Gibson. There was a sting operation in Detroit where they saw the cars being smashed. And in this big building, they had 150 illegal marijuana plants. So I'm just, you know, giving a little education on that. There was a child taken to Beaumont. I know they say they're not gonna have edibles, which they're probably not. The edibles, a little boy was taken to the hospital because he got into the edibles. They thought he had a stroke, but it was eating all these edible brownies. I'm just trying to educate people a little bit. And I want to read something from the book that I told you about before. I hope you guys can look at it. I left a message for the commission. It's by Alex Berensen. "I believe more than ever, the truth will win, but I have also learned that we don't, if we don't speak, it won't speak for itself. It needs journalists, physicians, and parents." I'm proud to be part, he said he's proud to be part of that effort. I hope you'll join me. After you've educated yourself, don't tell your children, just don't tell your children. Tell your friends, your family, your neighbors, your mayors, your legislatures. And, you know, at the council meetings, I'm just trying to give education to everybody. And my grandparents were here. My father, we grew up here, I told you that before. And I hope you do a good job. And I hope we have an open hearing. And thank you for everything that you're doing and all your time. And I hope you keep the citizens in your heart when you make the decisions. Thank you.
All right, anybody else here for public comment tonight? Going once? Going twice? All right, we're gonna close public comment and bring the meeting back to this side of the table, which brings us to item seven, the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Commissioner Macy?
F.
F?
F.
Okay.
As in Frank?
Not one word, just one letter, one letter request. All right, F? All right. Anybody else wish to pull anything off the agenda? All righty, the consent agenda now consists of city commission meeting minutes from March 14th, claims from March 22nd, approval of purchase orders, contract modification for CAP 2110, water main improvements, contract modification for Contract B1102, public service yard environmental consulting services, special event permit, Sierra Club Earth Day event, special event Jonathan Wits and Associates Taco Fest, approval of 2021, 2023 tentative agreement, department heads and deputy department heads association, and receive and file the non-action items, which is the 2022 memorial parade, May 30th, 2022, wild and exotic animal surveys summary, and Michigan World War II Legacy Memorial Update. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Macy, a second. Second by Commissioner Dubbuck. Discussion on the consent agenda as presented. All right, with no call for the vote, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, Commissioner Macy, F.
Okay, so we heard this question at a public comment and actually, Mr. McGee often comes, oh, there is. Mr. McGee often comes to our Parks and Rec meetings, but he has not been there recently. And if he had, he would have, we would have, we had this discussion already. I had the same question about Norman Oaks. It's quite a big contract for the maintenance of these areas. I said the same thing, maybe we should just be hiring someone. And Mr. Fidelli and Mr. Felipski had excellent answers to those questions. You know what to do.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Macy and Mayor Forney and the other commissioners. So in the packet, there is a highlighted map that outlines the area of the project's scope. And here with me also have the Principal Ecology's John Delisle, who is the head of this NCS group. And they're actually the subcontractor from England that did all the work as well. So they're very familiar with the site. As I mentioned, a lot of this work is a specialized work area and requires an ecologist to kind of oversee the natural habitat. There are native plantings in the area. There is wildlife that comes to this area due to the native plantings. So there's a lot of ecological activity going on in this park. And it was designed for that particular reason, to have a nice ecological aspect, oak savanna, native plantings, bioswells, native natural grow areas, all that jazz. So we felt as a staff, Aaron and I, that we did need a specialized group to come in here and help maintain and give the park that desired design need and upkeep of it. Our Parks and Forestry staff are great. They do a great job with all of our other parks and whatnot, but this, we felt was a little bit outside of the realm of how specialized it is. And I do want to make a point that, you know, this particular area would not substitute the other Parks and Forestry staff that we have. We still have other areas in the park that will need to be maintained by our staff. But just like I said, the highlighted areas will be specialized areas that NCS will take care of if this contract is approved. It's a four-year contract. I do want to make a clear point that it is quantity-based, and it's a not-to-exceed contract. So if, for instance, if there's a quantity amount on there for eight mows, I'm going to call it, if they give us six, we only pay for six. So we don't, you know, pay them the eight. So there is that also in the contract. So we're pretty confident with the work that NCS has done in the establishment of these areas during the initial construction phase, and we're pretty confident that they'll be excellent contractor and taking care of this area for the remaining four years.
Mr. Macy.
Thank you, Mr. Fidelli. So that was all said at the Parks and Rec meeting. We also talked a bit about Normandy Oaks is a big park. It's a big honkin' park. And we knew that there was going to be a lot of maintenance costs associated with it. And a lot of that was focused on the splash pad. We were concerned what that was going to cost. That's something we've taken under our own wing in DPS, so we've had to have people get trained in that. And this is, I mean, it's gorgeous, but it's brand-new. And getting these native plants going and getting this oak savanna to be the beautiful place we want it to be, it's not cheap. It doesn't happen naturally the way we would like it to. There's invasive species going through. There's kids running through there. And there are the animals, the wildlife, that's coming. So it's quite a big thing. And we hear quite a bit about maintenance of our parks. And like, we have 50 parks, and then people say, and we have 50 parks, and the benches are falling apart. We need to be making sure that we're maintaining the parks that we have. This is a brand-new park, and the last thing I want to do is make it have it look like junk because we're not doing the right thing to maintain it to begin with. I did have a follow-up question for Mr. Fidelli, or maybe this is for, sorry, I forgot Mr. NCS's name, John. So is this something that after four years, it will be perfectly well-established and we'll never have to do again, or will be at least cheaper? Or will it be, is this amount going to be something that forevermore we should expect to be spending?
I would delineate this to John. He's the ecologist here, but I would think that after the four years, after the establishment has cured and taken place, and after all of the items that are on the proposed contract, that we would be in a much better state than where we would currently be sitting if we didn't have especially ecologists coming through and making sure that the native species or native plants are growing, the bioswells are doing what they're supposed to do, and to take care of the natural grow areas as well. So I'm pretty confident after the four years, the contract may not be as extensive as what is presented here today, but we may have to bring back just a similar contract, maybe like a worry-free contract. But John, if you have anything else to say, I'm going to invite you up to the podium if you'd like.
Yeah, I can come up there. So I'm John, Principal Ecologist of Natural Renew Services. And the question, just repeating it for my own understanding, is really focused on what will be the next four years after this four-year contract. And I would say, you know, as an oak savanna restoration, there pretty much is a, you know, a well-developed restoration ecology, science approach to helping that, you know, basically use natural processes to maintain it. And it does maintain itself to some degree, but one of the things that was mentioned as an option in the contract is controlled burn. I know that there was another contract that came out for controlled burning of rain gardens. There's similar plant communities that, you know, occur in the oak savanna that would occur in a rain garden. Native plants of partial shade and sunny environments. Those, that set of species is very well-adapted to controlled burns. That's how these systems maintain themselves before, you know, European settlement. And the fire, bringing the fire back to the landscape actually helps, you know, them stay diverse and actually have a more showy bloom across the, you know, savanna. So I would say that would be a good thing to keep going in perpetuity. And some of the maybe bioswell areas, you know, front and center-type areas where we want to do, you know, make it really good and attractive for public engagement, to keep the maintenance up on a consistent basis in those areas. Some of the other, you know, things that we're doing during establishment, like these, in order to simulate the burning and other effects of prescribed fire, the plants, when they're real young seedlings, they don't tolerate that fire. That's why that wouldn't happen until 2024. But we mow it about six to eight inches high in order to have the same, similar kinds of effects. That would probably would not need to happen in the future if the city commits to prescribe burning every two or three years. So there would be maintenance costs in the long term, but they wouldn't be necessarily as high, you know, as in this first set while we're getting it established.
Okay. I mean, that makes sense. Any other questions? Mr. Prouse.
There we go. This is to John. We have outside maintenance contractors for other rain gardens in our community, do we not? Like the rain garden along Vincetta. I've seen worry tree working out there, both in spring and then fall, doing cleanup. That's kind of specialized stuff that I think is similar.
Yes, worry-free does take care of the rain gardens and the bioswells throughout the medians in the city as well, the other parks and other areas of the city as well, downtown This is a little bit more specialized. There are those bioswells there, but this is a little bit more specialized that. And this was put out to bid, so John was the only one that bid on it.
Yeah, this is definitely a lot more specialized. There's a lot more going on here than there are just in the rain garden on Vincetta.
I guess I would, even within Normandy, I would use the example, in the bioswells at Normandy by the parking lots, there are, I think, 12 different plant species, which in a rain garden, that would be high normal. But in the oak savanna mix and then the prairie mixes that are near the trails, like out in the savanna area, I think it's 35 and then 45 different species. So the ability to monitor, you know, that many different plants and field identify what invasive species are growing with them, what do we need to, what decisions do we need to make in order to manage those on a, you know, weekly and then monthly basis, that's just a little higher level of education needed to make those decisions.
Oh, absolutely. I totally agree. My only point is that, you know, we have other biological features in the city that we have contract workers working on, just because, A, number one, we don't have the staff, and we don't have the specialized staff that do that all the time. So I don't think this is any different. This is a much larger scope, and it's much more complicated, just given the nature of it. But as we do more and more of this specialized landscaping stuff, just like if you were to turn your front yard into, you know, a perennial garden as opposed to just green grass, it just takes a lot more specialized knowledge and expertise and time to be able to maintain that. So, you know, that's just the nature of it. If you want something other than, you know, 40 acres of just grass, then you're going to have to have specialized maintenance for it.
Mr. Colo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, what's the funding source for this?
I believe there is some money from the Norman, Robertson Brothers Development that was discussed when the Normandy Oaks was being constructed, some of the tax-based dollars. But most of this other would be subsidized through the general fund.
Okay. So for this contract, the funding source, has it been identified then? I guess, Mr. Bray.
I believe this is included in the budget.
Yeah. So, well, it's coming out of the general fund, but we had created a policy here.
So we did budget for this, though, this year?
Yeah.
Not through the ends of June, I think.
What budget is this in? I guess it's my next question. How's that? What budget is this in?
This would be for the fiscal year '22, '23.
But we have an allocation from the incremental tax base from the development at Normandy Oaks that we, as a matter of policy years ago, said, okay, take that amount and put it into, I mean, it goes under the general fund, but it offsets the maintenance costs of this park. Not all of it, but some of it.
That's all. Thank you. Mr. Nodas.
So do we have information on what those, that development generates in property taxes? And you might not have that off the top of your head, but it would be worth knowing.
Sure. That's a fair question. I would say that we'll follow up on it after this meeting.
Please.
My memory serves me correctly, we estimated at the time like $60,000 to $80,000 a year.
Okay. I couldn't remember.
I know it wasn't like a windfall. I would have remembered if it was like hundreds of thousands. Mr. Macy.
A motion approval?
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Macy, a second. Second by Commissioner Dubbuck. All right. Any discussion? I'd just like to thank staff. I mean, this is a thoughtful consideration, you know, to, I mean, this is one of the crown jewels of the city. One of the things that we're most proud of is the fact that we brought this savanna. We have the bees there. We have this natural, you know, we're restoring this park, the small little patch that we have in Royal Oak, back to what it should be and what it was. And in order to do that, you just can't, you know, pretend you know what you're doing. You got to hire the experts, and I'm glad NCS took the opportunity to bid on it. And, you know, with your reputation and experts, we'll be able to get this, you know, natural area established, maintain it, and it will continue to provide a great resource for the community. So thank you to everybody. Smart play. Thanks. All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. This brings us to item eight, which is the Michigan Liquor Control Commission License Establishment's Annual Review. I'm going to guess, based on tradition, Chief Moore is going to take this one.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. The police department finished up and conducted a review of all of the on-premise liquor license establishments in the city. And through that review, we discovered three businesses received violations in 2021. The first was Dugan's. They were found to be in violation for operating contrary to the Michigan Health Department COVID-19 orders regulating indoor gatherings. The second violation was issued to Cafe Muse for violating rules related to the acquisition of spirits from an unauthorized vendor. And the third is Michigan By the Bottle and all the subsequent distillers. They were cited for failing to timely renew their joint tasting room license. Along with us, the fire department, as well as the building department, conducted their annual reviews for all the on-premise licenses, and they determined there weren't any issues. So collaboratively, the three city departments are recommend, are not recommending any non-renewals for any of our on-premise licenses.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Quick point of order. Sorry, Chief. We can't open this packet, this on our computers right now.
I can open it.
Two of us can.
You probably didn't refresh your screen to get.
When we refresh our screens.
That sounds about right.
To get, yeah, to get the.
To get the road millage, yeah.
The road millage.
Or go to, I don't know what browser you're using. I had to switch to the, the blue, what is it, Edge browser in order to open the road millage attachment.
Can we take three minutes here where we, so that we're not showing Chief? Sorry.
Okay. You want to pause for a couple of minutes while you do this, or what's the request?
Yes, I'd like to add, I'd like a recess so we can figure this out.
Sorry, Chief Moore, we'll just take a quick couple of minutes here.
No problem.
So we can get these laptops set up. Now I'm not going to refresh until we get to the last agenda item.
Sorry, you can get to both.
Sorry?
You can get to both the millage and this.
Actually, I can access the MLCC report in Chrome, but I wasn't able to access the millage one, but I went to the Edge browser and was able to open it there.
Okay, so I'm the opposite. Now I'm in the Edge browser, and I was able to open MLCC here.
Oh.
And I have no idea what you're talking about.
You're going to have to say she when you come to the road millage.
Yeah, you're going to have the problem to get to the road millage.
Okay. We'll deal with it there then.
Okay. I'm in.
I'm in. So when you refresh it, it gives you a completely different image. I'm sorry.
Going to have to restart his teleprompter. He does not have a teleprompter for the record. I'm just teasing.
I will say, I've been waiting like a year and a half to see point of order, so that, you know, there's that. Check that one off the roadmap.
I feel certain you must have said that before.
Well, you sure as me.
Usually, Commissioner, I'll just beat some to it.
Okay, that's what must be what I remember. It's again.
It's again.
I'm going to do a bird feeder right now.
Yeah.
Try getting better ratings on them. That's a nice adventure.
So do we have, what are we doing?
Put it down here.
Did you set a time?
I just set a couple of minutes till everybody is. That rat has wings. Oh, it's a hummingbird. I don't know what that is.
So we're good now, I think.
Are we good? Everybody good? Everybody got it?
You figured out your internet's there, buddy.
Yeah, we've got the internet's working.
All right. So I guess we'll resume the meeting. Commissioner Colo just discovered the internet. So we can finally get back to a little worried how distracted he'll be for the rest of the, well, eternity. Now that he has internet, it's so amazing.
Don't talk about Google.
Love you all.
Is it funny?
That's Commissioner Prouse.
And let me just point out that even though I have no idea how to get it on this computer, I now have it on my phone.
Oh, wonderful.
So I have access to the road millage memo, and I'm all set. Thank you very much.
So you self-figured it out, Commissioner Prouse?
Well, yeah, maybe. But anyway, bottom line is, I've got it.
See that, Commissioner Colo? Problem solved.
Let's go.
All right. Chief Moore, now that you're done being fully entertained with our remarks and comments, I think you got through the first part of it. Let's continue, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to conclude, all the liquor license renewal fees have been paid to the city, and none of the city departments are recommending non-renewal for any of the on-premise licensed establishments. Included in the packet is the six years of the statistical summaries, as well as a synopsis of all the calls that we took related to any of these establishments. So I'd be happy to take any questions from anybody.
Any questions for Chief Moore? Mr. Dubbuck.
I understand you need your action from us unless we want to do anything other than recommend renewals. Is that right?
That's correct. If you don't take any action, the licenses will automatically renew.
All right.
Mayor.
Commissioner Nodas.
Well, and that's probably a good thing because the license expires March 31st, and if we have objections, we have to file them with MLCC at least 30 days prior to the expiration of the license. So that horse is kind of out of the barn. Just saying, I'm fine with this, but, you know, maybe we should, as a city commission, see it when there is time to act? Next year? Mr. Bray? Mr. Moore?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Mr. Colo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I do have a question about the property tax info for Roke. They owe a substantial amount, more so than anyone now. Roke no longer operates, right? Is that, is their distributor, the Easter market RE company, I believe it was, are they in that space, using that same license, or have they made arrangements to make some of these payments?
I believe the outstanding tax payments are due from Roke and not the new operators, as described from the treasurer.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Collo?
I move approval.
I don't think we have to do anything, right? It's just a report.
He was distracted by the Internet.
I saw, yeah, Google's here.
Google bird feeders. It's amazing. All right. Okay, thank you, Chief Moore. Don't see anybody taking any action here. Unusual year, to say the the least. Okay, that brings us to item nine, which is the road millage update and renewal request. City Engineer Donahue.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and city commissioners. First of all, I'd like to apologize. I don't know what happened with the whole packet thing, but I hope you all have it in front of you. And of course, I'll walk you through any questions, and if needed, this is okay to table till the next meeting. But tonight, I wanted to provide a brief update on the current road millage, which focuses on local roads, and then present some recommendations to renew the road millage for another 10 years and focus more on major roads at that point. Thus far, we've completed seven years of work under our 10-year local road millage program. I provided our typical attachments, which you see every year from us. So they show the year that we, the work that we did in the year of 2021, the work that we've done as a whole over the full seven years, and then also a graph kind of showing where our Pazer rating has been trending over time. Our current goal is to increase our Pazer rating for local roads to be at 5.0, and I'm happy to share that our current rating is at 5.08. So we have met our goal for now. I wouldn't be surprised if that rating dips just a little bit and then bumps right back up. But I expect by the end of the millage that we will meet that goal and exceed that goal. So I'm very proud of this program. This is kind of my baby since I started working here. This was my first big project. And I think we made some really major improvements to the neighborhoods throughout our city while managing to stay on schedule and on budget. So while our local roads are doing pretty well, I do have concerns about the condition of our major roads. We have about 51 miles of roads under our jurisdiction that we did not program into this current local road millage. Of those, about 62% of them are considered to be in poor condition. So we have Act 51 funding that we get every year. That's about $2 to $2.5 million that we use for capital road improvements. And then any additional funding that we can get through competitive grants, we obviously pursue those pretty aggressively. So that may seem like a lot of money, but that really only covers about 1 to 2 miles of road improvements each year. So I believe that if we renew the road millage for an additional 10 years, and that would be 2025 to 2034, that we'll see some vast improvements to our major road network, which is a major benefit to our city, which obviously sees a lot of visitors. I'm recommending that the commission approve placing a road millage renewal proposal on the November 2022 ballot for the voters' consideration. This would create approximately $7 million of additional road funding each year. And then with the Act 51 funding added into that, about a budget of about $9 million that we could use for local road improvement, I'm sorry, for major road improvements. So the principal goal, like I said, is focusing on major roads, but I also would like to make sure that we continue maintenance and upgrades on our local roads. We don't wanna lose the progress that we've made there. And I'd also like to incorporate sidewalk ramp improvements throughout our neighborhoods into the program. It's something that's kind of been consistently ignored over time. We don't typically improve them during our sidewalk program, and I think this is a really good opportunity to bring everything into compliance. I also would like to consider incorporating the sidewalk maintenance program as part of this millage. I believe we'd have the funding to do that. Right now, we're in the middle, oh, kind of more the beginning, of a six-year sidewalk program. We've only done one year. But by the time this new millage takes effect, we'll have done four, four of six years' worth of the sidewalk program. So my thought would be to finish off that program with the same billing that we've been doing. And then for the remainder of the millage, actually start taking on that maintenance ourself as a millage improvement, instead of continuing the billing cycle to residents. So in the commission letter, there is a link to a GIS map. That gives a tentative major road schedule for the 10 years. So you can kind of turn yours on and off and filter it as you wish, just to see what the city would look like year to year. And it's tentative, you know, everything changes over time, but we've put a lot of thought into that. And then there's also an attached table in the commission letter that lists all the projects, the costs, you know, the funding that we would dedicate to local roads each year and what we would dedicate to sidewalk improvements. So I have several resolutions in the commission letter for you. The first is the current and proposed charter language to renew the millage for an additional 10 years. So tonight, we're really just looking for your approval for us to send this to the Attorney General's office to get formal approval. There's also resolutions in there directing the city clerk to actually send that to the governor and the AG's office on our behalf, and also to publish the language in the newspaper in accordance with law. And then finally, the actual recommended ballot language drafted at this point is included in the final resolution. And of course, if there's any changes from the AG's office, we would update that before proceeding. So I'll leave it there and then turn it back over to you, Mayor, for me.
Okay. Couple, okay, we'll start with Commissioner Duba and then Commissioner Douglas, and then Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mayor. So we're to 5.08, so we're just a hair above our goal. That's, that's the good news. Awesome. Well, I'm pretty sure the University and Fair Grove are scheduled for the summer, and those will single-handedly bring us up another full point.
North Wilson, too.
So I'm excited about that. How does the potential for federal infrastructure money play into this plan? Are we thinking that we need this on top of, so our standard, you know, state road funding, and then the billions of infrastructure dollars that should be coming our way? Is this something that we would roll back, or we think we're gonna need in addition to those dollars that are coming? Do we have any idea what that looks like?
That's the problem, is we have no idea what it's gonna come in the form of, if it's just given out or if it's competitive, and what we will can really go after for that. So this is based on no additional funding, but you certainly, as a commission, always have the option to roll back if we're collecting too much money. And or if we get, you know, supplemental funds elsewhere, you absolutely would have the authority to do that.
I just anticipate that being a question coming from the public, and there's so much publicity around the infrastructure bill. But knowing that, you know, there's a potential we might not need this if, if, you know, we hopefully get some extra federal dollars in here. And so your recommendation right now is to work in the sidewalk program at the end of the current cycle?
Correct. So this current cycle will go through to 2026. This new millage would start in 2025. So there's, there's two years there where we've already done four, you know, the regular way, billing the residents. So, you know, we could do something else, of course, but that seemed like the fairest way. It didn't make sense to me to pay for two years of residents, but bill the other four.
Okay. And then this collection, so if it doesn't start till 2026, that would, by then, we'd have a better view to the federal funding formula under the infrastructure bill.
I sure hope so, yes. I can't tell you how many questions I've asked with like zero direct answers from, from MDOT, from Senco. You just, nobody knows.
Okay. All right, thanks.
So if I may add, if we do receive that federal funding, that would keep us from accelerating the projects, for that matter. So I would say that if we get additional dollars, that why not combine them with the the local funding? And that's just a, a policy question to be asked later on. You know, there, there's also a capacity issue of, you know, the engineering department can probably only manage so many projects going on concurrently. But, you know, if we do receive that other infrastructure, there's, there's unlimited needs that that we have in the community. So that's, I would take that as, as an added bonus if we're able to secure those funds. And my view is any outside grants, that we pursue those vigorously and anticipate that, you know, but perhaps that we won't have that local funding to, to manage. So just, but, but like I said, just kind of food for thought if it's, if we're in the best of all worlds, that, that could be a consideration.
And I'll just add as well that, just like we have unlimited needs, so does every other community. And so to have this funding available so we can start securing contracts as far out as we can, because when everybody and their brother gets this federal money and they start bidding on projects, the cost is just gonna go up, let alone the ability to actually find folks to get the work done. So I think, not just as a backstop, but as a way to get it approved, know the funding's there, and get contracting done for all of these projects, I think is gonna be really, really important, given that it's gonna be a rat race once communities get this money.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, Ms. Don, you, you may know this, but there's a website, build.gov, which I'm, which I've recently learned is gonna be the central point for the government to disseminate, disseminate information about the infrastructure spending. So there's that. So my, a question would be, given that our approach to sidewalks has been in six zones throughout the decades, and given that you will finish the second, the last two zones under the new millage, will your approach after that be citywide, or will you continue to use a zone approach? Or haven't you gotten that far yet?
I haven't gotten quite that far into the weeds yet, but my thought would probably be to continue working geographically around the city, just because you tend to get better prices if everything's more in the same area, instead of trying to hopscatch all over the place. And you, because we've done that consistently, you're kind of hitting the areas in a certain period of time each, you know what I mean? So you're not going back to the same area a year later that you were just working in. So that's my initial thought.
Okay, great, thanks.
Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, so I, I'm looking at the map right now of the work that your department's done since 2015, and, you know, it's a color-coded map, and almost the entire city has been hit, right? Like every neighborhood street, you guys have done a great job doing some sort of work in every neighborhood. But with this new millage, so we're gonna focus on major roads now, right? What kind of maintenance will we continue, or will there be? Surely, we're gonna keep on doing a local road, road work. Could you describe like what that plan would be?
Yeah, absolutely. So I, can I have a budget each year? And it, it does vary a lot, because again, I'm trying to stay within that $9 million a year budget. So some years, we have over $2 million in local roads that we can really allocate. Those are the years we go after reconstructs, major resurfacing projects. Some roads, like in this millage, were in pretty good shape, so all we did was joint seal. They'll be ready for resurfacing in five years or so. So that's where I like to slot those roads. And then in other years where we don't have quite as much funding, maybe half a million or something to that, in that range, those are the years we focus more on just joint sealing, some patching, going after chronic complaint areas. So there's definitely a plan to make sure we're keeping our Pazer where it's at, or even growing it potentially.
So even though we're calling this a major road millage, we're gonna holistically look at the entire city with the funds that this provides in addition to the other revenue sources that we have?
Right. Technically, it's always been called the road millage. We've just coined it previously as the local road millage. And I would, I would say we just start calling it the road millage. Because it's true, you shouldn't focus on one and forget the other. We should really be looking at the whole city that's under our jurisdiction.
That's awesome, yeah. And I, I think that this is a great way to, you know, we all have roads that we all know need to be replaced, so this is a great way to continue that effort. And it's at the same millage rate that's been previously approved for this in the past by voters.
Correct, 2.5 mil.
Okay.
One other issue, Mayor, if I may point out, that the way that this is worded, even though it's called a road millage, it's actually considering all improvements in the road right away. So it gives us the, the greatest amount of latitude. And that was the point that I was making earlier, that, that with the, the funds, that there could be new emerging needs. There could be price increases, there could be any number of circumstances. And so, again, it, it has that, that greatest amount of flexibility. So, yeah, don't segment it into local versus major. Think of it as, as improvements within the, the road right of ways, but the, the simple term is just road millage.
Commissioner Purush?
I'm looking at the list of major road improvements, the preliminary schedule, and I don't see Catalpa on the list, and Catalpa is a miss. Am I missing it?
I ju, yeah, it is in 2030, Catalpa from Woodward to North Main for 2.3 mil.
Okay, so we have to wait until 2030?
That's, that's the question I think I'm gonna get constantly is, what about Fourth Street? What, there, there's so many roads that need to get done.
Yeah.
And part of the issue is, especially in the, the early years of the millage, when we win competitive grants, we have to build those roads in that year, or potentially advance construct them, but that's a whole nother issue. So as we win grants, we have to start building those into the beginning of the schedule. Right now, I have a couple of roads in 2025. Or, sorry, just one road in 2025, that's a federal job, that pushed somebody else to a later year. And I kind of expect that's going to keep happening, especially for our major roads that are not, they're like minor majors, I guess. They, they don't have the traffic. They'll never qualify for the competitive grants to win the funding as it stands now. If we get more infrastructure funding, I'm hoping that there's a lot more latitude and ability to, to actually get federal funding for those types of, of roads. But, but that's part of the issue is why some of these streets get pushed towards the end.
Okay. I, I understand the analysis. It's just that, maybe because I'm on the road a couple of times a day, it's, it just, it's really, really, and my perception is that it gets a lot more traffic than the other half-mile roads, a lot more traffic, just because it's so close to the downtown and it pulls you into the major north-south arteries as well.
And we can certainly look at, you know, moving it around. It's, if you move that one, which one takes its place? But that's certainly something we can look at. The issue, I mean, almost all the roads on here are rated a two or a three. So there's, our good roads are done, and we're really just joint sealing them at this point. Most of these are kind of the problem child that we gotta deal with.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Duba?
With regard to the city manager's comment about this being really a, a right-of-way funding source, so all roads and sidewalks could potentially be covered, where does that put many of the alleyways that, that we own throughout the city that I don't believe we really do any maintenance of? Particularly those that are between, not necessarily between, you know, business district and residences, but there's some that, you know, run between, on the backside, on the right-of-way between residences. Just had some folks asking me about that, actually, this weekend after we talked about it. I didn't bring it up. And folks are like, do you, does the city do anything to maintain those, and is that anywhere in our plan?
That probably depends if it's, if it's private or public, because some alleyways are, are private. Oh, I'm stating that wrong. I should defer to the experts.
So our alleys are either public or vacated. And if they're vacated, that's kind of not our problem anymore. But the, the public alleys, our current policy is the adjacent property owners pay for the improvements. Or if there's another funding source, for example, in the DDA, they just did a couple of alley improvements, and the DDA funded that. So that's been our policy. There is just a huge, I don't even think I know how many alleys we have in this city. There are so many that people don't realize are out there in the neighborhoods that are poorly maintained, not used, maybe they should be vacated. So it, it would be hard, not impossible, but hard to say, we should do this alley and this alley, but let's skip those alleys. Or we should do all the alleys. I, that would be kind of a big study and report we'd have to look into and come back to you with. But it could be looked at.
Okay. I was just curious, if, I, I mean, I don't know if you, you budgeted every penny yet of what we're gonna bring in. I mean, I see we have a plan laid out here, but if there's a way to, yeah, discuss as we move forward, an incentive similar to what we've done with the, the paving of, of our remaining dirt roads? Is there some relief we can give to those homeowners who live on these alleys to try and get them improved slightly? Because some are really, really bad shit.
Improved or vacated.
Yeah.
You can pay or have.
Thank you.
Anybody else? So you're, I mean, the request here, I know we had some discussion about this being on the, the agenda in a timely fashion, but, you know, the request is that you're looking for the language to go to, to get it reviewed at the state level, just to make sure, the Attorney General's office, just to make sure that the language is copacetic and there's no legal issues with what we're requesting, or how we're requesting it, or what we're saying we're requesting. But then from there, it would still come back, and we'd still choose to put it on the agenda or not, correct?
Yes, yeah, we'll bring it back one final time before it goes to the ballot.
That satisfies me.
That satisfies, okay. Yeah, and I think we've had pretty much overall satisfaction with the, with the road program. I mean, the one, I forget what slide it is. It's the first one, that just has all the blue all over it, like the teal blue, with everything that we've done with some green, a cool, I mean, that's amazing as far as, you know, we've touched a lot of road, and the numbers show it, so. the numbers show it, so. So again, I guess then there would be a motion to be made if that satisfies Commissioner Douglas and everybody else. Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'll, we can lump all these resolutions, there's multiple resolutions, we can lump these together, right?
Yeah, I think. Although we have to do a roll call, so I don't know if we can lump them all together.
Actually, you do lump them all together, and it usually just goes from here to the AG's office to the ballot. So if you're asking it to come back again, that's something different, that's not normally what we do.
The last resolution here does state it goes on the ballot.
Right. And this is going to the ballot if it's approved.
All right, so I'll move approval of the draft language of the, for proposal A, with the proviso that the staff bring back to us for final approval, the final AG-approved language.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Douglas, or a second, second by Commissioner Purush, discussion? All right, this one, roll call, vote, or just a roll call vote on the millage?
Um, you can do a roll call vote.
All right, we'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Purush?
Yes.
Commissioner Collo?
Yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
All right, there we go. All right. Chief Engineer Donahue, anything else?
Not on this item, no.
Okay.
All right. Well, yeah, there is, there's a couple more open issues, but those will come back to us.
All right, let's go to item number 10, which is the approval of the license agreement, 32301 Woodward Avenue Parking and Public Alley.
Yes. Agree, limited partnership now owns 32301 Woodward Avenue. You probably know it best as the old art van building on the west side of Woodward, just north of Normandy. The previous building owner had an approved license agreement for encroachments into the public alley that runs along the rear of the building, and that area was used for parking, for a screen wall, and for some landscaping. The license agreement does not transfer with the sale of a property, so it was automatically terminated. And so the new property owner is requesting permission for the same usage that the previous owner had behind the building. Staff does not have any plans for this public alley, and we do not object to the requested license agreement here.
Questions for Ms. Donahue? Commissioner Purush?
I don't have a question, but I'll move approval of this license agreement.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Purush, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy, discussion? All right, let's now call for the vote, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right. This brings us to tonight's last agenda item, the Downtown Development Authority Recommendation Outdoor Dining Regulations and Extension. Let me see if I can pull this up on my... Okay, Mr. Hill?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm not sure all of you have met Daniel Hill, the DDA's new downtown manager, so I thought this would be a good opportunity to introduce him to all of you. He did put together the gist of this report, so I'll have him go over it, and then if there's questions of either of us, we'll be happy to answer them.
Good evening, thank you for having me tonight. Happy to be here with the City of Royal Oak for about two months now, just diving in, and happy to bring this first big thing before you in my tenure here with Royal Oak. So to begin, I'm not going to overdo the explanation, the explanation of what outdoor dining is. Everybody here has been two sidewalk cafes that have existed here in Royal Oak for a number of years, as well as the expanded dining that's been here since the governor's capacity limits a couple of years ago. Within this, it basically takes the current sidewalk cafe license approval process that the commission adopted a couple of years ago, and add street patios, which would occupy metered parking spaces. And that would be, again, through a licensing process similar to the sidewalk cafe, where folks that are approved by the commission already for sidewalk cafes, they would go ahead and go through their normal process. With street patios, they would apply for that licenser, and then the commission would see that, once it's approved there, following that with no issues year after year, they would be able to go through the normal license process that's already been prescribed. And I am happy to answer any questions.
All right, questions for Mr. Hill? No questions? Oh, okay.
I see a poll on me. It's nice, nice to meet you. Can you tell us how these recommendations came about? You know, what, now we hear Luigi here saying that he wasn't able to give comment to this, but I know there was a DDA meeting, what went into the thoughts behind these recommendations?
Yeah, so when I began the role, my, my goal was to meet with every business owner in the first six months. A lot of that takes form of me just being out and about on the street, going business to business, door to door. I have a number of business cards I've given out. That specific instance in which Luigi said that I have, I have not spoken to him, or the DDA had not spoken to him, I do know that his business was stopped by a number of times. I'm happy to give him a call and sit down with him, as I've done with the Mortons at Lily's Seafood, and a lot of it has really just been taking in account the best practices that are adopted by Main Street America, as well as listening to the concerns of the restaurants, as well as the concerns of the retailers. And a lot of that being the views of the occupancy of the metered parking spaces, as well as the tents being up year-round, and just the anecdotal evidence from business owners as far as increased foot traffic outdoors when there's outdoor dining.
So I guess then, so was this like a survey that you took? Like you went, you talked to individual businesses to get this input?
Yes.
Okay. And then, you know, another thing, and I guess this might shift to Paul or the chief here, but before getting much else, I, you know, the $25 a spot of space, we had long conversations at this table about how MPS would charge for those meters. And we accepted that they were charged for non-activated meters, meters that had not come to life yet, they were called, you know, new spaces, but all the spaces right now currently have tents on them, and they were not, you know, the conversation at the table was that those meters weren't being turned on, that they were being installed, in fact, we were told they were being installed to complete the network, right? You need to have all the connectivity in place, but they weren't being installed. So we currently have tents and patios sitting up, are we paying MPS now for these spots?
To my knowledge, no, no, that's been eliminated, that was discussed on the front end, because those tents were currently exist, so no, we are not paying $25 per space. But now, I guess my understanding by having them come back online, that they would be included in the contract. So, but to specifically answer your question, no, we have not been paying for these spots.
So this report specifically says that they're being charged because of the MPS spots, $25 a spot per day?
Well, from my understanding and talking with Keith Moore, or Keith Spencer, the MPS meters, as they do come online with charge for them, keep in mind, the street patios authorization to be there expires April 1st. And that's through the commission action. The street patios were allowed to go in in the first place under the COVID-19 temporary use permit, and they've been extended at least twice, if not three times, since that original action. And that action was taken on the basis that the governor had instituted a 50% capacity limit on the inside of those spaces. The review that occurred for those was, I will say, very limited in scope and breadth. And so, as part of that, that temporary COVID-19 permit is going away. What we're trying to go back to is the normal operating procedure going forward now that any state of emergency is gone. I can't speak for the MPS agreement or what your agreements are, but my understanding is they will be looking to have, to collect that fee going forward.
So I guess, and I'll finish off this line really quick, that if we continue, though, we, as an action body here, can continue there permanently, allowing them to stay, those spots will not be activated, and this fee is negotiable then with the restaurants, so that we don't, we receive a lot of feedback on the cost per spot per day. So it's possible not to charge up to $25 per spot then.
If you, if you maintain the, if those spots are not used for parking and they're used for an outdoor cafe, then no, there would not be a charge. So that's, because the contract did not contemplate the expiration of it, so they're dormant until such time that they turn them on, and then the charges begin.
Great. Because that's, that's not what this says, so that's good to hear, that is what's actually the truth. Or not, you know, the...
And I don't know when they'll, I don't know when they'll turn them on, but many of the, many of the patios are gone. And the ones in front of the rock are gone, the ones that are on Main Street are going to be removed as part of the Main Street reworking, so they're going to go away. They may come back, I'm not sure how that constitutes.
Wait, are we charging the asphalt machines for parking on Main Street while they're there? Because if so, good for us. Chief Moore is...
Well, and again, I'm looking for clarity, I think, I think what we've got in this agreement was what we thought could occur, and identifying what may occur.
Yeah. So I think, I think what I understand is that, you know, the general rule is, is that if anyone wants to come to us and apply for one, these are going to be the guidelines. But we already have established restaurants that have the cafes that where this contractual issue with MPS may play into effect, and it's just a different charge than those who want to start from scratch where there's already activated meters.
I have thoughts on the other design elements, but I hope the commissioner's talking back to them.
I'm going to go with Commissioner Dubac and then Commissioner Purush. So I hope the city managers take this right, because that was my understanding, because we specifically asked about these spaces when we were going through the MPS contract, and that clearly there is demand for this outdoor dining space beyond COVID-19. We didn't want all of a sudden for there to be a trigger of significant expense to a restaurant. That being said, we were forgiving our standard fee because of COVID as well. And can, does anyone remember offhand what our fee was? Was our fee $25 a day per eligible space?
It was 15.
Ours was 15?
I think.
Well, we've never had, until COVID-19, we've never allowed patios in parking spaces.
Well, for example, the rocks, the rock space.
But for meters, I believe it was 10 bucks?
15.
15.
We were doing 15 a day?
Right.
Okay, so the MPS fee per space has significantly increased, but then again, they are getting greater efficiency out of each parking space by ensuring people are actually paying to park. So there is some rationale there, but I want to make sure that we understand, what is the legal trigger? Do they see a legal trigger here? If we let this emergency order expire and then start a new process, is that creating a trigger by which all these spaces now are subject to this $25? Is that, is that what we're saying? Chief Moore?
No, it's my understanding that any established street patios where there's no infrastructure in the ground, there would be no added charges if they wanted to continue the street patios. I think those that wanted to start from scratch, have a new street patio, I think there would be some back and forth with MPS as far as the charges on those per day.
Okay. And that's reasonable, if someone wants to bring something to the table under this contract. Okay. I appreciate that we're trying to create space to, we used to talk about doing the patios in the parking spots like they were doing in Birmingham, and it was going to be the end of days. And now, everybody loves it, so I just think it's kind of funny. So I want to get to a place where this is an option for any restaurants who want to pursue it, and have it not be cost prohibitive. So I want to do whatever we can to maintain the status quo, although, like, free is not exactly reasonable either, I mean, that's been under the emergency, so. Okay, that's really my only concern, I'm fine with just about everything else in here.
Commissioner Purush?
This is just kind of a picky legal question, because we've been operating under the COVID emergency stuff, we haven't had to do anything like this, but on a going-forward basis, those businesses that want to have street patios, or have street patios that have a liquor license, should their operating agreement that we approve be amended to reflect that just because those operating agreements talk about space, and how many people come in at the bar, and how many seats there are, and that kind of stuff? Or is that just being, you know, too picky?
I think it's something to consider, if these aren't just going to be temporary, and they're going to be there for, you know, not an emergency-type situation, I think it's something to consider and add to their plans of operation.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Commissioner Macy?
Okay, I just want to follow up with the conversation that was being had here, make sure I understand. So we're saying now that this, we're not, they're not paying for the spots they have, and if we were to continue the agreement that we have 30 days or 60 days, that continue to not pay?
Correct.
I got that. If someone brand-new wants to do it, and hasn't done it before, and they want parking spaces, they would have to pay, because they're brand-new. Got that. What I don't understand is what's being proposed here, I think, is that we shut it down for part of the year, and then when it opens back up, if we open it back up, it sounds to me, it sounds like in this contract, they would then have to start paying, people who had already had this established would have to pay for the parking spots, five, whatever it is, 5,000 a year, because, because it's now going to be wrapped into the MPS system. And my understanding was, I think the same as what was being said before by Commissioners Collo and Dubac, was that when we made the MPS contract, it was during COVID, yes, but we, it was given, given things as they are now, if we are going to do something different, yes, we have to make that up, make that up in the payment, but if we're doing, if we're continuing to do what we're doing at the moment, then we don't have to charge for those spaces. So it feels to me like if the people who already have them established shut them down for the summer, and then bring them back for the winter, or wait, other way around, then they shouldn't have to pay, under the understanding I had of the contract before. But it sounds like that's not what we're being saying here.
Well, I don't have anything to say about whether the MPS meters are charged or not.
Okay.
Okay, that's not coming from us.
Right.
Okay, so I don't have any, any comments on that. What, as Daniel was trying to say, is we are trying to get back to the normal operating procedure, and follow the same procedure that sidewalk cafes, the standard ones did, which ran from April to October. Then they would go away for the winter, they wouldn't be there. That was the recommendation coming out of the DDA. And the input we received was not to have them out in the winter, and not have enclosures, and to go back to a standard design. From a staff standpoint, I'd like to get to that, because these COVID-19 temporary use permits that went in, I can't tell you they're out there to code. I can't tell you they're out there in compliance with ADA. They were not required to submit plans that were sealed, they were not inspected, and every one of them has added something to them since with every extension. There's not a one of them out there that's, looks like the plan they submitted. So I don't know what you would be extending or approving. So minimally, I think you've got to go back and require an application and a submission to address those issues, and get insurance, and get licensing signed, very similar to what we do on an annual basis, or did with the standard cafes. That's the process, excuse me, that's the process that I think, from a staff standpoint, we've got to get back to. Whether or not MPS charges or doesn't charge, I really don't care.
Well, sorry, I know you don't care, but we do care. And the victims are the cares, so maybe that's not the question for you to answer, but it's nonetheless a question we have.
Right, but that's, but that was not part of the overall recommendation.
Okay, I understand, I see that.
It was an informational piece, because that was the question we were asking from a staff standpoint, is MPS going to charge, and are we going to pass that on and collect it? I've heard two different things, but that's okay. So...
Okay, so is there someone who can't answer that question in this room, because it's not Mr. Twain?
So, I mean, I think what we need to do is go back and look at the MPS contract. I think that we need to compare it, you know, what is that trigger in there, what's considered, you know, a change? And then we look at doing something like, hey, you can lease it in perpetuity on an annual basis rolling over, so there isn't a stop, that you can only put up the, you know, stuff between April 1st, and, you know, effectively you have the same thing. So creative ideas like that, that maintain the status quo for those who, you know, during really challenging times spent invested money in these patios. And it sounds like, and I do agree with Mr. Twain, that, you know, from a safety point of view... you know, I mean, windstorm, something, these things, I mean, we got to get back to having some standards to make sure, not just aesthetically that they're fine, but that they're safe. I mean, we're inviting people to come to downtown Royal Oak and have a good time. You know, safety's our number one priority, we want to make sure that, you know, tent doesn't collapse or something catches on fire. So I think that we got to get some creative ideas on that. I think I have Commissioner, but we haven't heard from Commissioner Douglas, so I'll go to Commissioner Cole.
I recall, and, you know, memory's imperfect, that the terms with M P S were not necessarily so much about which specific parking spaces, but had to do with gross revenue. That is, the amount of money we would collect would be X, and that reflected making up a number forty-five parking spaces that are out of commission. If that's true, I mean, if it's a, if it's a gross number and not specific parking places, and we have businesses that have disassembled their parking space structures and others that want to add them, isn't there then a, a sort of a finite number of parking spaces we can tie up anywhere we want? And, and I would ask, as we explore the contract, to see if what I'm saying is, is correct.
And I'll also add too, I mean, I know this is going to be an unpopular statement, but, you know, businesses are still struggling, they still need some help. But at some point too, we did this with the ambition that, you know, folks couldn't even, I mean, if you're used to getting a thousand customers, you couldn't fit them all into your building, especially in winter. I mean, so we afforded these outdoor spaces, we did it for free, because frankly speaking, they didn't have the, you know, space to accommodate indoor patrons. While we still have some legacy issues exiting COVID, we're still going to have, you know, the, the businesses can operate in full capacity indoor as of today. I mean, who knows what tomorrow looks like? But, you know, giving them away for free in the future, I mean, I think even though there's a status quo, it shouldn't be, you know, a windfall. That help was there because, you know, they, they literally had no space to put people because of the constriction or the restraint. So I know not everyone wants to hear that, I mean, we're not out of the woods yet, but just something in the future to consider, you know, as part of this planning. Cole?
Thank you for that. So, uh, to Commissioner Douglas's point, it was thirty spaces. We have thirty spaces of budget of wiggle room within our M P S system. I know this-
Currently, right now, we have thirty that are taken up?
That's how many that we can bag anytime in our system without being charged that twenty-five dollars a day. So I, I guess, you know, Mr. Twain, I, I do appreciate having more design standards. In fact, that's what I love best about this proposal. We had the gamut of patios out there from the Rock, which I just think had like glorified barricades on the ground with picnic tables that they hoped to have blow away. You had the igloos at Tom's at that whole area this week, this year. There's really nice truck stacks over the place, so there's definitely the difference out there. How long would it take your department to review, or how much time do you think would be needed for us to tell businesses, hey, get, we need designs, we need you to design something, we need you to get approved, we need to review it, we need to inspect it, and then you can build it? How much time from tonight?
Well, and I think part of the proposal that we put in front of you was to extend, to allow them to stay after April first and give everyone thirty days to submit plans to us so we could start reviewing them. If they didn't submit them, their other option would be to remove them if they didn't want to have, have the patios anymore. And, and I've heard from a couple of restaurants that they're, they're not going to put them back because they still can't staff them, or their kitchen's not big enough. So not all of them will return, but what we built in is, tried to build in is, under this is indirectly extending the current venue, provided that you submit new plans by May first.
So I, I, okay, so I just want to make sure that thirty days is enough, because I was worried that that, you know, thirty days is a very fast turnaround right now. I guess it'd be thirty-nine days from today, but that's a very quick time to ask someone to get architecturally stamped plan, have your office review it, get it back to them, and then for them to build it, right?
Oh, I, no, I'm, I'm saying that alls they have to do is submit a set of plans, and then we'll review them and get corrections on them at some point in time. If you submit the plan so that we can start reviewing them, you can leave your patio.
Okay. Okay, so, good, so there's, there's a mechanism for that. Um, so, and, you know, speaking of leaving the patio, like, as much as I did like the idea of having constant design in the downtown, I personally think that having, I personally think that having the patios available in the winter is pretty important to the health of our downtown restaurants. I mean, we've strived to become an outdoor eating destination during the pandemic, I think it's worked. I think our outdoor dining is among the best of them, because it's a place that you know you can come to downtown Royal Oak and eat. Going back to the Tom Ale Mary's group, they did a great job this winter with their igloos. I mean, it was just downright beautiful, right, on some snowy nights, with the Christmas lights going back and forth and the igloo. It was a fun destination. I think it reminded constantly that COVID's not over. I mean, it's, it's getting, it's better right now, and who knows what's going to happen this winter, and I don't want to limit us. My little, you know, my little two-year-old daughter still does have a shot, and the possibility of this vaccine is just in flux right now. They don't know what's going to happen, so she's not even inside. I think there's a lot of residents like that, a lot of who can't get vaccinated, who are vaccinated for other reasons or immunocompromised. So I don't know why we would shut down the ability for the restaurants just to even offer the, the outdoor patio. So when approving this, I would look for approval where they can have it year-round. Now, I would look for design elements in there, right? You know, maybe it's, asking you guys to come back with a new design element that is, you know, that that has a tent that you can see through. I think we're all sick of the white tents on Washington that are just a, while they're nice and they're warm on the inside, yeah, they, they could be an eyesore. So I think there's design elements, we can go around that, but I also really believe that having tents throughout the winter or some sort of enclosed or semi-enclosed structure in the winter is pretty important to us too. That was not a question-
Commissioner Douglas?
So is the quality you're looking for, sounds like the quality you're looking for is transparent sides?
I would look for a recommended, I, I don't care what they come up with. It's, it's, it's to, I, I think the intent, and I'm sure, looks like Mr. Hill wants to say something like this, but I'm pretty sure the tent here was to make sure that there's visibility, right, when you're driving down the road again. You could see the retailers, you could see the restaurants. And, you know, quite frankly, when you drive by a restaurant, if it looks busy, it will be busy. Right, you pick a couple of people in the front window, more people won't come in, right? So I, I think that's the idea with having a transparent, a way to see through these tents, is to make sure people see our rider downtown just beyond the tent.
Yeah, thanks.
Just to comment on the tents, from the surveying and business owners that I've spoken to, the, the majority of them have said that during the winter, especially this last winter, when capacity inside was upped back towards the 100% mark, they were predominantly vacant. I had at least two business owners say that it was more of an expense for them to keep it up, but they felt that they needed to keep it up to compete with the other tents that were in the city. Additionally, as it relates to the tents taking up multiple parking spots, for example, over on Washington, in order to make a patio feasible, you have to take up minimum probably two diagonal spots. And that's just based on the shape and the ability to occupy that space. The retailers alternatively are not extremely fond of them being around in the winter, because it makes it more difficult for their patrons to park right out front of their store and come inside.
I would highly encourage and encourage our patrons to use our friendly and easy-to-use parking structures, but to our screen, only seventy-five cents an hour they're after.
I would definitely agree with you there.
Yeah, but I, and I think that's a really good point, because our downtown isn't just restaurants. We have lots of retailers, service industries, that, you know, people, especially in the cold weather, want to get in and get out. You know, you want to go buy that, that gift from Rail and Anchor, you know what I mean, real quick on your way home from work, and you want to make sure those spots are available, and if there's an igloo there with nobody in it at 5:30 at night, you know, that can be, you know, you know, the opposite effect, you know what I mean? You help one, you may hurt the other. So I think that, you know, what I would look at is, I don't know, I mean, it'd be interesting to see what other communities are doing with outdoor dining. But I think for the wintertime, it might be interesting to look at it, maybe where COVID is and everything like that come September, October, and then decide if we want to extend, you know, a winter option as well and put those design standards in, if that's something that folks want to look at. That's my thought. Uh, we'll go Commissioner Macy and then Commissioner Cole.
Yeah, I think I was just going to say the same thing, is that, you know, we're hoping, trying to move from pandemic to endemic right now, and I'm sympathetic to that situation, but it feels like we're a long way away from that now, and having been in restaurants this past weekend that were pretty packed. I don't think there were a lot of people who are still, I, I think it's a fairly small number of people at this point, and I don't know if it's going to be a lot larger or a lot smaller when it comes time, you know, eight months from now, that we have to start thinking about that again. So I'm, I'm with the mayor on-
Mayor, could I, I guess I had one comment? We can, if, if you wanted to, because the thought on processing these, and again, I'll go back to the original, your first request, would, we would be bringing those to the city commission for your approval. We could add a, we could add a provision to the application, and, and they could say they'd like to keep it up year-round. And then they'd have to add what they want to do in order to facilitate that. Is it a clear igloo, is it something, and you could decide, or, and we may get some that want to, and we may get others that don't. But we could, we could modify this and, and let them petition you guys to either leave it up from April to October or petition to leave it up year-round. I, you know, if, if that's the feeling of the commission to not limit the time period, because that again was a recommendation coming out of the D D A was to limit the time period. And, and it was really chosen, going back to how the standard sidewalk cafes operated. They were put adjacent to the restaurant from April fifteenth to October thirty-first, and then they were removed, primarily to help with snow removal and things off the sidewalk during the winter months, but-
So, so Tim, what you're recommending is basically, hey, you know, here's the easy, simple return to normal approach, April through October, but if you want, and you're, you're considering doing something for the winter, put a mark here and you can appeal to have a winter or year-round.
And, and we would do that on that initial application, because the first time, we're going to bring it to this body to get a blessing. Renewals after that, they can just apply for every year and we'll deal with it administratively. But if, if that's the desire of the commission is to potentially leave some of these up year-round, I would pump that to the restaurant owner and let them ask for it.
But I also think too, for already giving them year-round ambitions, we got to give them a little bit of guidance too. You know what I mean? That says, hey, we can't have, you know, a permanent structure out there, you know what I mean? That you can't see the neighboring businesses and stuff.
Well, they would have to provide how they're dealing with their propane heaters and how they're heating it, the fire marshal may look at it.
Yeah.
Uh, there's, there's, you know-
Visibility and traffic, so planning, we look at it.
There's a lot of things that we kind of cursory looked at. We got to get back to looking at, yeah.
Commissioner Perush?
Just in talking over the winter with a couple of business owners and knowing where we are now, unless things radically change, I would be really surprised that you would get a lot of requests to extend it year-round. Given the staffing issues, given the complication of, you know, dealing with things like the fire marshal and making sure that your heating equipment is appropriate, and staffing issues, and running in and out of the building carrying trays of, you know, hot food through the snow to get to the tent. I mean, I, I would be, I would be very surprised if you had requests for that kind of thing, once, if things continue the way they are.
It's another headache to manage on top of so many, unless you actually are getting, filling it out and have the people to serve.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dubac? Hey, Marina, I appreciate that, that last comment, just to, just to keep the door open for someone who may want to make that appeal. I think to Commissioner Macy's point, places have been packed these last few weeks, and the public emergency, for better or worse, it may not be over, but business is kind of returning to normal. And while, you know, I was asking about the M P S rates, because I know it's, it's different from how things were, it was in that state of emergency that we allowed for the private exclusive use of public property for a single business. And there should be a standardized process with a standard aesthetic and safety and accessibility protocol. So I appreciate the D D A and for you all bringing this, bringing this forward, because we do need to start getting back to some sort of organized approach to this, especially with summer approaching. So is there, there's a, is there a-
There's a motion.
I'm on the wrong thing, I have the robe thing up here. All right.
First I use the computer?
With the, with, 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 with the amendment that staff will bring back, you know, some sort of just option or process for folks who do want to pursue a year-round license, there being some pathway for that to be considered on the further- Yeah, motion by Commissioner Dubac, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush, discussion?
Mr.?
Uh, Commissioner Cole?
Does that, does this include a reference to the fees that they will pay for the parking? The co, you know, I see the application itself, it has a couple hundred dollars in fees itself, but how about the price that we charge per spot?
In terms of the metered space, if M P S is not charging, we're only charging the application fee. And there would, if you wanted to do a patio, it would be the same as if you were doing a sidewalk cafe. You can apply for one or, or the other or both, but we're charging two different, the fee for each, and it's the same fee. Seven hundred and fifty dollars for liquor and, what was it, three something for-
Something like that. But, but to your point of what the fee would be for that space, if M P S isn't charging a pass-through for that, that would be at the discretion of this commission.
Yeah, so I think we probably want to recommend, I, I don't think we want to make a number up here at the table tonight, but we'll probably want a recommendation on a fee to charge for the spaces.
Commissioner Dubac? Yeah, we want staff to, one, get clarity on the M P S thing, and if those spaces that were currently occupied, we signed the contract, they're not going to be entitled to charge a fee to. We'll want to assess a fee at a rate that allows us to create a standard fee for those who might want to lease a space where M P S is going to charge that fee just to keep us, hold us harmless in that transaction, but not have some folks get it with just the licensing fee, some folks have to pay the, you know, fifty-five hundred dollars a year. Does that make sense, that we'll want to see, once we have clarity, on what's going to happen with the spots that we're currently occupied? Make sense?
Okay.
All right, anybody else? All right, I'll call for the votes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Good legislation, people. Need to figure it out. All right, so that brings us to the end of the agenda, notwithstanding anything for the betterment of our beloved community. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Douglas?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac, discussion? All right, with none, I'm calling for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We're adjourned.